Yes, thank you. A couple of things. I do agree with trustee Zia that the chair of the committee should not be a voting member in the sense of, I'm sorry, a member, an employee of the district in the sense that it almost gives the appearance that there's a conflict of interest with the selection process. If you sit back and think about it for just a second, initially, when trustee Zia first brought the issue up, the first thought that came to my mind is it really doesn't make a difference. I just kind of felt like it doesn't make a difference who the chair is. But then after hearing her speak and then hearing the rest of the trustees speak, it occurred to me that having an employee of the district be the chair of the selection committee might actually give the impression that the district is, you know, I'm not sure, I know the feeling that I got, I don't know that I could articulate it, but it almost seems like the district is, in a way, manipulating the selection process by having a district employee chair the selection committee. I also think that perhaps the committee itself should have the opportunity to select its own chair at the first meeting. If maybe once the first meeting takes place in December, the committee could, you know, say, you know, is there anybody interested? Or maybe Rose, being the non-voting member, could ask if anyone is interested, and then at that point have different people speak to express who's interested and then maybe vote. That's just my consideration. You know, I don't think it's monumental, but there is an impression that, you know, there's a conflict of interest there.
Well, I don't agree with you, and I'm a little worried about having a vote at the meeting. It's going for two hours, Narcissa has to train them as to what to look for and what the rules are, and I'm just afraid it's going to turn into a situation of we and they and, you know, winners and losers.
President Baxter, if I may.
Sure.
You know, I agree with, I could see both perspectives, and I appreciate trustee Malauulu's comments. What I'm suggesting here is that if the role of the chair is simply to co-facilitate, perhaps it should be someone that is either a non-voting member, which is Rose, or like we had last time, I had a note passed on to me by our soon-to-be acting superintendent, that Jim Walker was the chair last time, and that was a community member.
Who's the consultant?
Or the consultant, I'm sorry, a non-district employee. So perhaps we should either have the consultant be the chair, someone outside of the district employee body, or a non-voting member be a chair.
Madam Chair, excuse me, one more thing I forgot to say. Often, you know, other boards that I sit on, usually the chair is not a voting member anyway. They tend to be the tiebreaker. If there's ever a tie, the chair is the one who will be the tiebreaker. But I don't know if, you know, there's a law that says that's the way it has to be.
Justiato.
The thing that's missing is somebody making a case for bias on the part of the college that is trying to find a new superintendent president. I haven't heard anything that would cause me to believe that having a member of the management team chair the meeting constitutes, is based on some kind of bias or some allegation of bias. In fact, it's almost, you know, we're all in this together, and you will hear me say this at every single meeting that we have with regard to this presidential search, the most important thing that we can do is to act together. And if we start off by assuming or positing that somebody is biased, or may be biased, and therefore we can't have them, we're going to have to have somebody else, I think the whole process can wither and blow away, and we will not be able to attract the candidates that we want, we will not be able to engage in a meaningful process, and I caution this board that it is very important that, beginning right now, that we act together. If there's a real, if there's a basis for believing that somebody is biased or would be biased, then if somebody wants to state that case, I'm very happy to listen to that. But I have heard zero, and in fact, to the contrary, it's important that we move forward on this, and trying to find somebody else, it just doesn't make any sense, given what it is that we're all trying to accomplish.
President Baxter, I can absolutely see your point, trustee Otto, and I would agree with you 100%. We do need to be all together on this front, and precisely for that reason, the process that we followed, at least from the ad hoc committee's recommendation, has been that it's modeling the past process followed. Therefore, I would make the same argument, that since we did this last time, and a non-district employee, a person that was not a district employee was the chair, that we do the same here. If we're going to be consistent with the past practices and processes followed, then we should also practice that here.
Can I interject? Let me be clear, the consultant was not the chair in the last process. He convened the first meeting, but turned it over to the chair of the committee, so that is the only thing that that person did.
Who's the chair?
I'd have to go back, it was one, I think it was one of the, it was either a management team member or a community member, but we can go back and find that out.
I just have a note from your team that says it was the consultant.
You now have a message from me saying that it was...
But you haven't verified that, so I would just say that let's not...
I can verify for you right now that it was not the consultant, and being a candidate in a recent search, I can tell you that the applicants prefer to be able to go to the search consultant without any issues related to the search process. It would be in your best interest to allow Narcissa to work with all of the candidates to discuss issues that they're concerned about, issues that have been raised, issues in their past, that they need to vet with the consultant before they get to the committee. And I think if you make the consultant part of the, make her the chair, you're eliminating her ability to work with all of your candidates.
I just don't see that argument. I don't see how the consultant chairing the meetings would hinder their ability to work with the applicants. That absolutely makes no sense to me.
Thank you, trustee Zia, but I happen to agree with superintendent President Oakley, that that's a very valid point, and I think we ought to call for the question, and the people who do not wish to vote in favor, that would be fine, but I have to read one more statement which says, "The Board of Trustees requires that all representatives appointed attend all meetings of the search committee. Therefore, it's important that the approved representatives provide the utmost flexibility with their calendars throughout the recruitment process." So I'd like to call for the question.
I have a point that I'd like to make before that, that I think is very relevant. I don't know that it's appropriate for the chairman to call the question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think discussion is a...
So let me try and explain my understanding of what the conflict might be, because it may not be transparent, and that is this. So you've got a candidate that's got something in his or her background, excuse me, and she wants it to be treated, he or she wants to be treated confidentially, and it has to do with whether that person may continue in the process, or exactly how to handle things, and so that person may share confidential information with the consultant. Now, I wouldn't want that consultant with confidential information to be then chairing the committee, and that can happen not with one candidate, not with two candidates, but maybe with a half a dozen candidates, and I fully expect us to get lots and lots of things. The consultant functions not just to make sure that the process moves forward, but to answer those questions that come up from candidates and anybody else, and without that independence, I don't see how the consultant can serve in that role, so I think it's a bad idea to have the consultant be the chair. It puts him in conflicting roles, and so I'm supportive of the idea that, or the recommendation that's been made as to how to proceed with this.
Can we proceed with the vote?
No, can I just ask a question? And let's not stifle discussion. I think it's a very valid point you're bringing, trustee Otto. I didn't see it that way. I didn't realize that that's, it could, we do need to have that separation as far as confidentiality is concerned. If that's the case, which it sounds like it is, thanks for bringing that up, I wasn't looking at it from that prism, then if it's possible, designating a non-voting member to be the chair, and I think this is a fine list of individuals, I think it's a very thorough and great recommendations, especially, I was, I'm happy to see the ad hoc committee's joint-at-large community member that you guys are suggesting. I think she's had a great experience hiring superintendents, and we have great representation. So I would just make a friendly amendment to change the chair to the non-voting member being Rose Delgado, if that's the desire of the board, and if I have the support of my colleagues, that's just a very, in my opinion, it's a minor, a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Assuming she would be okay with co-facilitating.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure, do you want to answer, Rose, and then?
I would be happy to, if that's the wish of the board.
Okay, I'm not sure what the procedure is.
Yeah, I would make that a front.
Downlist into a new motion, or?
There's a motion, a second on the floor.
I would make a substitute motion to amend the motion on the floor.
Like Jackie's opinion, excuse me.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Change it with the amendment, and we'll add it to the motion, okay?
So does somebody have to make the amendment?
No, let's go with what you've already put on the floor, and let's take a vote to add, to change the chair to Rose Delgado.
So it's two votes. The first is the motion that...
One.
There wasn't a second.
There was a second.
Yeah, no one has seconded.
I'll second it.
Does the consultant want to weigh in on this issue of having a vice president assume this role? Because I think we got advice from her that that was a bad idea.
Is this the vice president who is, who's a non-voting member?
Yeah.
Yes.
That does the training.
Okay, so that's the person that does the training. I think I can make that work.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved by trustee Zia and seconded by trustee Malauulu to change the chair of the committee from Shenni Weber to Rose Delgado.
Okay, so that is now...
The motion.
All right, Jackie, go ahead.
Okay, and I will clean it up a little, if you don't mind, but right now it'll just say that Vivian Malauulu seconded the substitute to change the chair to Rose Delgado, and we'll clean up the motion, okay? I would not have substituted it, but they're going for that. Board docs doesn't allow two votes on one item.
So it's an amended amendment.
I would say amend the chair, the standing chair of Shenni Weber to Rose Delgado.
So we're a prisoner of board docs?
You're a prisoner of Jackie Long.
And to that point, that's why I was going to ask, how did, how did we come up with someone? We didn't call her and ask her, we just looked at it, and in the past, for example, when you have a vice president, there was a concern, again, and I assume there's probably this impression, there's always a conflict, there's always undue influence, and we felt having a vice president, whether voting or non-voting, would probably not be appropriate, because some people would say, well, that person is too close to the existing superintendent president, so we went through all these scenarios, no matter who you finally select, there's always going to be that question of, is this person have inappropriate influence or what have you? So we did go through, that's how we came up with the individual in the past, it seemed to be one to run the meeting and the requirements of that individual, so that's how we did it, and we went through the different scenarios. At the end of the day, as we move forward, but we also, because to let the consultant have a pretty free rein to do, has already been stated previously by others, to allow that person. So I did ask originally a question, I just wanted to get the answer to that question. That was that we did run, everyone's appointment lives in the districts of each appointed trustee, is correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that did get confirmed, right? Thank you.
She lived here, and I verified that. Yes.
Can we call for the vote?
Okay, so we're having the vote now.
Now that the consultant has said that she's comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that, and my concern was that we had been advised that it wasn't right to have a vice president, you know, vice president's on the committee, but if the consultant who has a lot of experience in running these processes thinks that that works, then I think that that's fine.
Okay. All right, so, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you, and congratulations, Rose.
Thanks.
Okay, consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there anyone who wishes to remove?
Yes, item 4.15 and 4.17.
Okay, 4.5 and?
1.5, 4.15 and 4.17.
4.17. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved to approve the remainder of consent calendar.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I have to pull the items. Oh, I'm sorry. 4.15?
4.15, 4.17.
So then my motion will be with the exception of those two items, 4.15 and 4.17 of the consent calendar, the remainder consent calendar will be approved.
Second.
And so, motion. I don't know, I'm just saying motion made by Kellogg, seconded by Otto, and we will wait.
I'm sorry, I have to change it from consent to action, and there's lots of clicking.
While you're doing that, I will turn the pages.
Okay, back to the approval is motion by Kellogg and Otto.
And Otto.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Zia, just wait till I get my page two, please.
You ready for the vote?
No problem.
On the consent?
Well, we got, yeah, let's, I think we can get a vote, President Baxter, on the remainder of the consent.
Okay, we're ready, okay.
Virginia Baxter.
Oh, yes, aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 4.15, this is approval of contracts and amendments issued under $175,000. Trustee Zia.
Yes, thank you, President Baxter. The question I have is on contract number 99738.1, which is from July 2016 to March 2017, for $31,500 in developing and facilitating strategic industry and community relationships in conjunction with the district's TAACCCT grant to promote placement of participants into jobs in the construction trades and alternative fuels industries. I'd like to understand if this was competitively procured, and if so, how was this vendor selected?
Who would like to answer this?
That side of the table.
Vice President Bynum.
Yes, thank you, thank you, trustee Zia, for the question. The vendor was selected, we had to look at three vendors to come and do outreach for the program. This is outreach for the Department of Labor Trade Adjustment Act grant. The purpose of the outreach is to identify companies that are involved in trucking, in construction, in heavy machinery, so we can place our students hopefully with those companies, and so their responsibility is to bring those companies to the table to work with us on the grant and placement of students.
And how are we funding for this? Is it from our grants, or is it coming from our general funds?
No, this is all Department of Labor federal grant, Trade Adjustment Act grant. That grant has been in place for a couple of years now, and that grant goes through next year. We just got an extension for it as well.
And how was the value of the contract set? Was it, was there negotiations, rigorous negotiations followed, or is it based on the proposal that the vendor provided?
Well, the vendors, we gave specifications for what we wanted done for the scope of the work, the vendors had to respond to that. The vendors get paid based on their successful outreach to bring industry employers to the table and make connections with our students.
So the value was negotiated, $31,500, what's that based?
Well, that's a cap for it.
I see, okay. All right, I have no further question, thank you, Executive Vice President Bynum.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. Could we have a motion to approve 4.15, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
By trustee Otto.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Malauulu. Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 4.17, thank you, and thank you for your questions, trustee Zia.
Certainly. Thank you, President Baxter. My question on purchase order ratifications is on page two, and bear with me while I bring this number up, it is purchase order 78644, seventh item from the top, this is presentary agreement for $30,000. I'd like to understand how, where is the source of the funding for this, and why are we paying $30,000 for a speaker?
Vice President Long.
The funding source is student equity, so the Student Equity Committee put forth a proposal through Student Success and the College Planning Committee to bring in speakers this semester, Cornell West being one of them, so the funding is 100% from student equity.
Okay, no, I have to say that I admire Professor West, and I think he's, I may not agree with all his beliefs, but I think he's a fine speaker, I just, I'm a little bit surprised to see us pay this much for a speaker. It seems to be a little bit, was this a process followed that, you know, people pined, and there was a process that we said, okay, this is fair and reasonable, and it was going to have a direct benefit and value for students? I'm assuming so, because it's on student equity, but just the value, the amount, I struggle a little bit.
Trustee Zia, your concern was echoed many times, and we went through a lengthy process through the College Planning Committee vetting this proposal, and at the end of the day, the College Planning Committee felt that it satisfied the requirements of the student equity funds, and there was a lot of work done to prepare for Dr. West's speech, there was work done in the classrooms with students to discuss the issues that were going to be raised, and we ensured that access was provided to as many students that wanted to participate. Fortunately, we had a packed theater, but I echoed your concern, but this was, at the end of the day, a strong recommendation from the College Planning Committee, which I felt satisfied they understood the concerns raised, and did a lot of work to ensure that we got the greatest value out of this speaker.
And what's the value?
$30,000, or the value that was created. The value that's created is the opportunity to discuss the issues that Dr. West speaks of, particularly as he speaks to underrepresented minority students and the issue of equity. So, working with the faculty in this case, the value that's created is discussions that are held in the classrooms before and after the event, and I think we tried as much as possible to survey the students that attended. I think we've had very, very rich and positive responses from the students that attended, and the desire is that these discussions about, specifically about equity, be an ongoing discussion in our classrooms. So that's the value that's created, and that's the value that satisfied me to forward the recommendation.
President Oakley, may I ask a question? Was his presentation videotaped?
Yes, it was.
So that it could be of access? Because I agree with trustee Zia in that it is a lot of money to pay somebody, so it could be accessed by students who are unable to attend, or the public?
Correct.
I appreciate the response, and I certainly have faith in our process and our planning committee's decision. I would just caution us, you know, with technology, we can have a YouTube up and have Dr. West or speakers like him in cyberspace speaking to our community, because, you know, we are a community college rather than a country club, so I would just caution us to be a little bit more frugal with the spending, but I certainly can see the value that it could bring, but that's pretty much all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee O'Malley.
So I understand the concerns that we had with these, I guess, the purchase or the agreement for this one speaker, but from a student perspective, and from all the students that I've spoken to, you can't necessarily put a dollar amount on the impact that this really had on a lot of students. We are trying to promote not only like a safe space, but an opportunity for students to have these issues around equity, and as mentioned earlier, have these discussions in and outside the classroom, and I think this definitely provides an opportunity for students to have that, and I know, as trustee Zia mentioned, that we have the opportunity to do cyber things with technology and all that, but it was engagement, I felt, that was one of the biggest parts of the event. And it was a packed room, there were hundreds of students there, hundreds of faculty, hundreds of staff, and it was a successful event, and then the second one as well with Van Jones. I understand both concerns, but I see the value in it quite honestly.
How much was Van Jones?
Vice President Long.
We paid for Van Jones in the spring with student equity money. He was supposed to come twice. The second event was on the day that Prince died, and so this one, when he came back this time, it was free.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I agree with our student trustee, I just, you know, we have homeless students, we have really dire circumstances that I would love to see us, and we are attending to it, but just, you know, having that in perspective, that would be great. I'm sure you will have that in perspective. Thank you, President Baxter.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you had seen me wanting to speak, flaggy down. I'm glad that trustee Zia actually pulled this item off the consent calendar. It was something that I had felt compelled to ask about, but my question is just, and perhaps Vice President Long can answer, what is the student equity budget? What is their budget, and what percentage of the budget is this $30,000?
So the student equity budget is about $2.4 million, and the money is designed for us to close the gap on disproportionately impacted students. So we have the data that shows areas in course completion, transfer, retention, and what we're doing is looking at various ways, including the Student Equity Speaker Series, if you will, to close those equity gaps for disproportionately represented students, foster youth, veterans, those are in the categories as well. So the Student Equity Committee recommended the speaker series, they are having discussion about what to do this year and subsequently, and we talked about that at CPC, College Planning Committee, I'm sorry, last time. The one thing I would say about Cornell West is that that cost included travel, it also included, everybody who attended got a book, got one of his books, he stayed afterwards to sign those books, and we have since, all of us who attended that event, received a survey to talk about the impact that it had on us as managers, faculty, and students. So they're going to follow up, they have student IDs for everybody who attended, they'll follow up with focus groups to determine the impact of that event on our students, and whether or not it did increase their engagement in the college and their commitment to higher education.
Okay, my second question is, how does his fee compare to other speakers? And with Van Jones, you said that we paid for him in the spring, that his visit in the fall was free. How much did we pay Mr. Jones in the spring?
I believe we paid $16,000 to Van Jones. Cornell, yes, Cornell West was absolutely the most costly of our Student Equity Speaker Series people.
Got it, and I know next week we've got, or tomorrow, Thursday, we've got Luis Cinco. How much, just curious, how much are we paying?
how much, just curious, how much are we paying him?
Oh, gosh. Less than Van Jones.
Okay.
Eight thousand, I mean, again, I don't have it sitting in front of me, but each of them were significant, but Cornell Jones was the most costly.